Well, thank you trustees and members of the community who are joining us. Spent a very busy time in the Ann Arbor Public Schools through the summer, and we have been focused every week on one dedicated goal, and that is the full reopening of our schools. Mr. Clulie is going to bring up that presentation as we go. So right at the outset, we just want to reiterate that we are reopening our schools for full in-person learning for all students this school year. We have stated that repeatedly since February 24th, when we, when the board supported that, and we have reiterated that every week since February 24th. We do understand that with the rising cases, particularly with the Delta variant, that there are concerns among our parents, and we share those concerns. And yet, we are opening our campuses fully, and that is happening in only 19 days. We will continue to have those schools open, and we look forward to seeing everyone at school on, or virtually, for those who have chosen virtual programs, on August 30th. We're going to do a few things this evening, trustees, because we know how important it is to move through some key and critical topics. First, we want to clarify some steps with communication that, so that folks are clear. We have lots of new parents to the district, and we have parents who are, perhaps have been in the district, but perhaps would benefit from understanding how we're working with communication this year. We'll be sharing just a preview of our test results. I know that trustee Lazarus and the performance committee, as we do every late August, we will be diving into the survey results from the two surveys. But I wanted to just share a preview this evening because I want folks to understand that we've spent time this summer looking through that data, and we are absolutely keeping that front of mind as we work on our back-to-school plans. We have a progress report. On summer of 2021, we had hundreds of learners in-person learning all summer, more than 5,000 students involved, and then also another robust summer rec and ed program. So we'll have an update on that. We are going to update some back-to-school, fall back-to-school information, and show you where that is on the website. And all of these things are coming to parents in the weekly updates. So there won't be anything here that you won't also see in your weekly email that you'll be receiving. And then we'll finish our time together this evening. Trustees, you all have supported just a ton of physical work in our buildings, and we know a picture is worth a thousand words, so we wanted you to be able to see, and our community to be able to see a lot of what's been going out there, going on out there in our schools over this summer. So we'll finish with that video presentation. On our communications for this fall, just to be clear, we began those fall back-to-school updates back on July 30th with an extensive update, and we've continued that weekly. As trustee Kelly noted, our building leaders, our school leaders, have returned to duty this week. So I've already seen emails going out to parents, and I know that we'll see more. And the beautiful thing about that school leader, the principal or the assistant principal, is we know that those emails will be much more specific, focused on the physical setting of that particular school. So watch for those communications coming very soon. We are also, in our weekly updates, rearranging so that at the beginning of the message, there will be a brief highlights section. That's designed to be a one-minute or two-minute read. For parents who are really just too busy to read a longer message, look for that highlight section at the beginning. We'll continue that throughout this year. We also want to note that we use the printed message, the video message, and/or audio message. So I do receive messages from parents saying, "I don't have time to read," and then others will say, "I don't have time to watch a video." So we actually are delivering multimedia messages, and that will continue, really focused on meeting as much as we can our parents' needs for information. In case you've missed any of those updates that have been coming to email box, those are all located on that back-to-school website. It's right there on the top line of the homepage, and you can see when you go there that we have our health and safety right up top. We have our school year transportation notice, and you can see there that by mid-August, every parent who has requested transportation will get their confirmation email of the time and the place where they can get a bus. So all of that information on the timeline is here, and you'll get more details. We will continue to populate this over the coming days so that all of your information is there, as well as in your parent emails that you receive. We also want to acknowledge that this is really a very stressful time. We've not been to school fully open and fully operational since March 13th of 2020. So we do understand and we hear all the concerns, and we're going to continue to work together to work through those concerns and not underestimating the number-one concern, which is keeping our students and our staff, our parents and our family, safe during this COVID time. Okay, we'll take a look at our survey results. This is just a little peek in the door. Our next steps are very clear. That performance committee, and I love having these discussions with our committees because we'll dive deep into the data. But tonight, just sharing a quick overview to make folks aware that we've been reviewing this data during the summer, and this data is a part, it's informing the work that we're doing right now with our school opening. I just wanted to point out to the number of participants in the K-12 Insight Survey. We've given this survey every spring for many, many years, but the total number of participants in that K-12 Insight Survey, over 13,000 folks. And we appreciate everyone who took time to give us feedback on that one among two of our surveys. And then trustees, very, very wonderful sign, I think, is that among our parents, really, our response rate was very strong, over 4,000 parents. And although our staff and students responded at a lower rate than they did during the before times, we still did have almost 900 of our staff and about 3,000 of our students, a little under, respond. So we're really appreciative of that. And then back to slide nine. Just the preview simply is that overarching question of school quality is that overall, participants appreciated the quality of their school with 97% of elementary students, 93% of secondary students, and 85% of parents rating their school as excellent or good. Of course, there are many areas of this survey that we've studied over years. So trustees, we look forward to diving into all of those areas that we look at year after year to see how we're doing. But we wanted to share a little bit of the overview to let folks know that we are taking a look at this data very closely. Slide 14 really shows, illustrates how folks are rating their own school. And then on slide 15, you can see how that compares to our last, and I don't like this word, but we use it, our last normal or before-time survey, which was 2018-19. And you can see the comparison over time with parents and guardians, with staff, and with students, students six through 12, and then students in grades three through five. The second survey was a thought exchange survey. And trustees, you recall that this is the tool that allows folks to just share their thoughts, and then for other folks to rate those thoughts with one star, three stars, four stars, however, however much others resonated with those thoughts. If you look over on page, on slide 20, you can see that in that survey, we had over 1,500 participants, 2,200 thoughts, and almost 84,755 ratings. So those were the engagements where folks weighed in on other, other ideas that had been shared. Here are the folks who participated. You can see right up front, trustees, that the large majority of participants were elementary, pre-K through fifth grade. And then you can see on slide 22, the breakdown, and you can see that 80% were parents on that particular response. The word "cloud" is just a way to see how often words were mentioned in the thoughts. So you can take a look there at that slide and just see, the larger the word, the more often that word was mentioned in responses. What we'll be diving into, trustees and sharing out, is the top themes. So we took the top 100 themes, and you can see them there across slide 24. Overall, in all of this data, the overarching theme, themes were around get us back in-school, in-person learning, in particular, attention beyond academics, social, emotional, health and wellbeing, making sure that extracurriculars, band choir, athletic activities, et cetera, wanting the full engagement in in-person activities. So we've kept that right at the front of our thinking as we've worked over this summer because we know that is the overarching concern. We did hear from quite a lot of folks, as we did this evening, and we surely understand the needs of our working parents, and we've worked valiantly over the summer to restore as much of the before-and-after extended-day programming across the district that we can. Trustees, we've spoken about that a lot over the weeks of this summer, have provided you an update every week on our progress. It is a very difficult and painful situation, and we are doing everything we can, and you'll hear more about that as Ms. Bacalor comes to share. So that's just a quick preview of the feedback. Again, thanks to all of our students and staff and parents who responded to those surveys. Our next step is we'll share this with performance committee, dive in to a deeper discussion. And then we will be posting, as we always do, to the A2schools.org website, all of the data. So folks will be able to review the data in full, as well as our theming that we've done and our next steps with actions out of what we've learned from our stakeholders. So we'll move on to a progress report on summer learning. I know that Ms. Lyndon is joining us, and I believe Ms. Parks. Just to give you a quick overview, we had over five, nearly 5,000 students, just under 5,000 students, engaged in at least one summer learning experience. And right now, we're talking about the academic side, and then Ms. Bacalor will, will share a progress report on the rec and ed side. Ms. Lyndon?
Thank you so much. It is our pleasure to share with you a very brief, singular opportunity to review all of the wonderful things that happened this summer. In the next slide, what you'll see are basically that summary. On the left, we had four programs running for elementary students in total at the middle level. That includes grade five transitioning towards sixth grade this fall, five separate opportunities, including our CESLA and EL programs. At the high school, a whopping eight different kinds of opportunities for summer programming. And in special education, specifically, three opportunities for those. Along the right-hand side, just summarizing what those were, we offered two specific English learner programs, three in special education, ESY, Intensified Reading, and Summer Academy. All three of those programs were designed to provide recovery services to students with special attention to areas where students may have missed services during the school year. We offered credit recovery, and I think a really important part of this is that credit recovery did not begin in the summer. It continued through the summer, but it began at the first signs of students not reaching credit attainment. And so really, in earnest, began in January. That important move in our district helped us recover the credit for many courses even before summer. And so we're very grateful to our high school leaders, who you'll see on the next page, the next slide here, who have helped us. That was Mr. Mike Somerton, Dr. Dan Hillier, Dr. Amina Allen, Mr. Salvadi Enthais, and of course, on the A2B side, Mr. Anthony Lauer, who supported that work. All of the programs in the summer offered some remote and some in-person, obviously with a focus on in-person being core and important. All of the programs really took into account and planned intentionally for the support of students and their social, emotional wellbeing, making sure to focus on connections and relationships is a really important part of that work. And of course, a focus on academics and making sure we were filling gaps and helping students get to where they needed to be. So we're just really proud of that team. I know I only mentioned the high school crew, but here you'll see our middle level, our elementary and our special education team members who really never stopped working all summer long. So they may have gotten a couple of days off, bless them all. So thank you, thank you to our over 200 teachers who worked in these programs as well, including our support staff, our amazing peer professionals, and our office professionals as well.
Thank you, Ms. Lyndon. Ms. Lyndon, you beat me to it. I wanted to give a huge shout-out also to all of our summer learning team and all of our summer rec and ed team. This has been, last year was a tough year for every educator in the country and ours as well. And these folks stepped up, and they had a quality summer programming, both in-person and in-virtual. Thank you, Ms. Lyndon, and thank you, Ms. Parks, for your support. Ms. Bacalor is going to just share a little bit about our summer rec and ed programming as we give our end-of-summer update, Part One, this week. And then we will move right on in, Ms. Bacalor, to our next area, if you want.
Good evening, Dr. Swift, and members of the school board. At rec and ed, we were so thrilled to once again offer in-person summer programming for youth in our community. It wasn't as big as we normally do, but it was comprehensive with early childhood, camps and classes, and our beloved Safety Town, with K-12 summer camps and classes, and with team sports. We were COVID-safe throughout, and actually, our summer camps are going for a couple more weeks. So we were just thrilled. This is our, our joy and why we do what we do, to be able to serve the community. So it was a, it's been a great summer for this.
Very good. Before you jump into the update on extended-day program, I want to thank everyone who spoke on this topic this evening. The trustees know very well because they've received weekly or even more than weekly updates on our work. This was a painful decision. It had to be made in order to ensure COVID health and safety, that the program would need to be redesigned. We knew that that redesign would take some time. And we also knew that we had struggled for years with staffing. And back in the spring, when we began to recall our school-aged childcare staff, we knew that we were going to be dramatically short of staff. So we've taken a number of steps over the spring and summer, and actually, this redesign was already in progress back in 2020 as a result of staffing challenges we had in the fall of 2019. So what you're seeing this evening are the efforts that our team has made to restore an extended-day program and redesign. So Ms. Bacalor is going to share more about the programming that we have designed. And trustees, just this evening, they've launched the website for the enrichment classes, and those classes will open for enrollment on Monday. So we know, and we're not pretending in any way, that this is the same as the before-times program that we offered. But we also know that we've taken extraordinary steps to redesign in a way that will be COVID-safe and in a way that we are able to staff it. As we're able to staff, we will continue to add programming throughout this year. And you're going to hear about some exciting new possibilities this evening. And again, not making light of the struggles that we know are across our community and the country around the overall need for childcare. Ms. Bacalor, share with us a little bit about the programming that we've been able to redesign in order to meet the needs of our working families.
Sure. So over the summer, the rec and ed staff and I have been doing a few things simultaneously. And first, on the childcare topic, I want people to know that I hear you. I've had many conversations with parents this summer, and as a former childcare parent myself, I take to heart the great stress that this is, that people are experiencing over this. I really appreciate the offers of help and support that many individuals and different entities have offered. And so we have been working on childcare all summer. One of our biggest challenges is staffing, and people can help by sharing our job postings and letting people know that we're offering a $200 bonus to new hires. And we have a retention bonus as well for our continuing staff. So typically, the period from early July onward is when we really have the most success hiring people who will actually show up for work. Unfortunately, we have not had that, that inflow, but we are still setting up interviews and hiring, and interviewing even today and next week, and we will continue doing so. It's important to note that we're not alone in these challenges. The staffing is a problem locally, regionally, even across the state and country. And I think things will get better, and, and we will be able to bring back more, including bringing back additional, additional scheduling options and so forth. So we are in five Title I buildings. We have actually doubled the percentage of scholarships, about 25% of our families who are enrolled are receiving scholarships. We do have some space available in all five buildings. And we do have a new partner with MSU Extension who will be offering some programs in the fall and in the spring at a couple of these Title I buildings as part of the childcare program. So while we've been working on all of that, we've also simultaneously been working on a new way of offering after-school enrichment. We, this is, this has been a very big change for rec and ed, and a lot of hard work has gone into it to go from one hour after school on, you know, an assortment of topics to at least an hour and 45 minutes after school on an even broader range of topics. So classes go until 5:30 for both elementary and K-8. This is available in the 13 buildings that do not have before and after care. We do have, we're changing the scholarship program across the board, so there will be more scholarships available. You can go right now on AAreced online and see what's available. It's, there's a lot. So I think it's easier to not to look on your phone, to look on your laptop or your other device, and it goes by day of the week in the website. So we do have a new partner, several actually, for our after-school classes. The Ann Arbor Symphony Orchestra, we're really excited to bring on board. They will be at Allen for a, for an after-school class program. So we're, we're really still working on this. It's a work in progress, and we're trying to meet needs and also do good things with kids after school. So still to come, based on staffing, is our Let's Play After School program. Again, we have not had a ton of applicants for this. If you want to share that as a, something that you can do to help, that would be great, that job posting. And we will, we will be adding more over the course of the year. I think we're, we're just in a hard spot right now, and we predicted that we would be. And, but we are continuing to hire for Let's Play. We will continue to hire for childcare. And I hope this year that things will get a little bit better for us all in this department. I would like to say a huge thank you to rec and ed staff and community partners for simultaneously running all of our summer programs and planning for the fall, and, and just working really hard, not taking vacation this summer. I have several staff who have not taken a single vacation day because they've been so focused on, on serving parents, serving the community, and working through this troubling situation that I know is causing so much struggle and stress across our community. So thank you. And I've actually named some of the people who are in our extended-day program planning team, who've worked so hard. I also want to say thank you to all the students and families who participated in rec and ed programs. It was great to see you, and I hope participating brought you as much joy as it did us.
Ms. Bacalor, before we transition into health and safety protocols, would you be able, Mr. Clulie, to bring up that rec and ed website? And I know you touched on, Ms. Bacalor, our scholarshiping, that we have scholarships available. So I want folks, we did hear the concern this evening about costs. And I know, trustees, I want to thank you all. I know several of you have been working on connections in the community to support our parents financially. And so there are many activities underway to try to get support for folks who may look at this and say that they'll need some financial assistance, so.
Right on the website, we say how to, how to go about getting a scholarship. We have just really streamlined it. You call and you talk to a live person, and that person, friendly rec and ed staff person, will walk you through the scholarship process. So we just decided to just cut right through it, you know, just call and we'll help you out. So yeah, so if you scroll, Andrew, you'll see that there's a whole bunch of classes. And that's why I started scrolling on my phone when it was done this afternoon, and I was just scrolling forever. So I think it is a little easier to see it on, on the big screen. And we will be able to, you know, maintain our COVID-safety measures of physical distancing, masking, et cetera. And some of the classes are outdoors as well. And some of the classes are outdoors, as well as you can see, Nature Navigators at Thurston is outdoors, for example.
Very good. So, Ms. Bacalor, if parents are interested in, I know these classes aren't the same as having every day, you know, extended day, like some did in the past. But if they're interested in accessing the enrichment classes in order to fill in some afternoons for working parents or for parents of students who are just interested, they would go on Monday? Is that the day when this will open?
Yes, 8:01 a.m. We are reserving a number of spots in each class for scholarship participants. So we will just build that right in so they don't get filled up right away because we know sometimes that can take a little bit longer. So, you know, this is our effort to really try to fill some need and also just offer some fun stuff for our students to do after school. And you'll see that many of them are six to eight weeks. And our plan is to see like what goes, what works, and then we will add Fall Two to the schedule.
Very good. So we will continue to be adding to this program. Will you share a little bit just about your work with new partners? I noticed that you have the Ann Arbor Symphony Orchestra as a new partner who responded to our RFI. Would you just share a little bit about that?
Sure. Well, this was the first time we've ever released a request for information, as far as I know, that we've ever done that, just to try to tap into whoever in the community might be interested in offering after-school enrichment classes. And we did it on just widely, you know, individuals, nonprofits, businesses who might have some ideas. And we had a pretty good response, and we're still working through with some people who responded. But actually, they're in the fall lineup. We have, I think, three sets of classes that are directly because of that RFI, where individuals with different expertise or like the Ann Arbor Symphony Orchestra responded. And then we just, not, I say we, but it was really the Rec and Ed staff listed on this on this huge thank you slide, worked with them, and it's ongoing. So we may end up doing an RFI again for other things because it was great to hear from, like, we have never worked with MSU Extension before, for example. And they're going to do a great food and nutrition program as part of childcare and then come back in the spring and do a gardening program. So that's the kind of thing that in a redesign, we're just looking around to see what else is, what else is out there that's possible. So we're, and some of the things were not exactly right for after-school, but we are looking at other options, like, could it be a workshop? Could it be something else, et cetera?
I will also mention that our ever-popular fall sports, youth sports, which you, Rec and Ed has done every year, it's just as popular as ever, it sounds like, fully enrolled at this time for those early fall weeks. And certainly, you're always adding more as we go through the year on a seasonal basis, yes?
Yeah, yes. We, I think we might still have some space in field hockey, maybe.
Oh, good.
If people are interested, they should just call the office. We do have live people.
Very good.
Eight to five, every day.
Very good.